What did you say? Yeah, it feels like the most.
Good evening. I will call to order the regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on June ninth, two thousand and twenty-three through posting a notification of the press in accordance with Wisconsin State Statute nineteen eighty-four. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we consider a motion to adopt the June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Education agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ardry, seconded by Murray. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes eight-zero. Commissioner Hanawell is absent. Safety message. Commissioner Paul.
Thank you. I was thinking about what to talk about for the safety message tonight, and I was thinking about our air quality because, as we are all aware, we have had a lot of air quality issues across the United States and obviously from the Canadian wildfires. So I was just going to talk a little bit about who in particular is at risk when there is a great deal of air pollution. People with lung disease such as asthma or COPD, children and teenagers because their lungs are continuing to mature. Children and teens can be more active when they're outdoors, and so they may inhale more pollution. Children face greater risk of infection, coughing, bronchitis from air pollution, which is something I haven't thought about before. Older adults, people with cardiovascular disease or diabetes, people with who have lower income, they face greater risk from air pollution. People who work or exercise outdoors are also people who live or work near busy highways. I think we forget about some of those people. Here are some ten tips to protect yourself from unhealthy air. If it's going to go to it now, let's see if technology will work with me. The network's going slow. This was all on a website. Okay, there, we're going. Check air pollution forecasts in your area. Avoid exercising outdoors when pollution levels are high. When air is bad, walk indoors in shopping mall or gym or use an exercise machine. And then limit the amount of time your child spends playing outdoors if the air quality is unhealthy. And I hope that we don't continue to have these air quality issues, but it makes me even think about athletics and, you know, if things continue on those trends, what decisions we have to make. Hopefully, that's not the case because that would be terrible. Avoid exercising near high-traffic areas. And walk, bike, or carpool. Combine trips because, of course, that creates less pollution. There's more. You can look them up on your own, but there's other things on our agenda tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Liz. All right, three point four. Moving on to citizen comments, I have five. First up, I do want to remind you, when you're speaking to the board, you have three minutes. There'll be a timer on the screen for you. It'll go yellow and then red when your time is cut off. And first up is Jeff Ruder. If you'd please come up to the podium and state your name and your address.
My name is Jeff Ruder, one-twenty Jackman Street in Janesville. I am currently the president of the Janesville Lacrosse Club. I've been a resident for twenty years in Janesville and have had two children that have grown up in the Janesville School District. They started out at Roosevelt, went to Marshall and Edison, and then finished at Craig. My daughter graduated two years ago, and my son is a senior this coming year at Craig. My wife and I have expressed to our children the need to be involved in something at school. We didn't really care if it was athletics or clubs or anything. We felt it was important to be involved in things, and it didn't really matter to us what it was. We felt that involvement in activities provides the opportunity for engagement, skill-building, personal growth, and improves the overall student experience. Adding lacrosse to the school district's current options would provide another opportunity for students to learn and grow. Boys and girls in Janesville have been playing lacrosse with our club since two thousand and seven. With the WIA introducing the sport of lacrosse in the upcoming school year, I would like to think Janesville High School students will have a place to continue to play. Lacrosse is one of the fastest-growing sports in the country, and my goal as a president has been able to has been to provide as many people as possible with the opportunity to play the great sport of lacrosse. We have tried to remove any obstacles that may prevent players from playing. That would be some of the things we've done. We've provided free clinics, provided equipment to players that can't afford it or that just want to try the sport without any added costs. Our club has some of the lowest participation costs in Wisconsin, and basically, we have even waived it for individuals that have needed it. Our focus has been to grow the sport of lacrosse and provide an opportunity for everyone to play. The highlight of this last season was actually being able to field an under-ten-girls team for the first time rather than having them play with older girls or on the boys' team. We have met with the district superintendent and athletic directors to discuss the introduction of lacrosse. The information has been helpful for the club to better understand the process of introducing lacrosse in the district. The club is requesting that the school board take the next step in the process and evaluate the feasibility and potential implementation of boys and girls' lacrosse programs in our high schools. The club is willing to support the process in any way needed and provide information, knowledge, and equipment we have obtained from fielding teams over the last sixteen years. Our feeling is that this is just the start of the lacrosse journey together. The club plans to continue to grow the youth program and be a feeder program as well as a booster club for the boys and the high boys and girls' high school teams. I hope you consider and support adding boys and girls' lacrosse as a high school sport in Janesville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, we have Patrick Lyons. Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Patrick Lyons, two thousand and seventeen Ruder Avenue here in Janesville. I'm also talking about lacrosse, so I'm going to build off of some of the comments Jeff made. I'm a Janesville resident, was went through Craig High School, me and my sister and my brother, and now I'm the father of three children. Two have graduated from Craig in two thousand and twenty, unfortunately, and my youngest child is now an incoming freshman. My three children have all played for the Janesville Lacrosse Club. I've coached at various levels throughout the club, and now I'm a board member as well for the lacrosse club. Lacrosse has been an important part of our family since around two thousand and ten, and I'm here today to request that the board take whatever necessary steps to investigate or figure out how we can add lacrosse as a sport for the high schools. I do believe that the district is capable of adding lacrosse without detracting from the other sports that you currently offer, and this would provide students with another option to participate in a team sport. Without the adoption of the sport at the high school level, the club's programs, the Janesville Lacrosse Club's programs, will be at a severe disadvantage. We most likely will not be able to schedule games because all the other clubs in the area have adopted the WIA model. So we can maybe string that along for another year or two, but after that, we will really struggle to keep the program alive in Janesville. So please consider taking action tonight in the form of an exploratory committee or feasibility study or whatever the next step in the process is so that we can continue to offer lacrosse in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Matthew Combs. Please come to the podium and state your name and address.
Heather, my name is Matthew Combs, seven oh nine Sullivan Ave. I'm here in Janesville. I am here today as the head coach, also a former player of Janesville Lacrosse and a two thousand and fifteen Parker grad. I am here today to, again, support lacrosse and get it into the schools for, you know, various reasons. It's a it's an absolute it's a beautiful sport. A lot of a lot of, sorry. I I speak from experience getting ripped away a season or, you know, the potential to not have a season. So I'm here in plea of that. Lacrosse is it's a beautiful game. It teaches teaches young men, you know, when stuff gets tough, it gets tougher, and, you know, you cannot lay down and you have to fight and continue. I don't know where I'd be without lacrosse as an individual, as a person. It has taught me many, many things. My high school coach for two years, and he was also one of my football coaches, Craig Fisher, if some of you know him, he has taught me life, a lot of life lessons. He has opened my eyes to so many things, and he used lacrosse to do that for me, and I am forever thankful, and that's why I'm back here coaching today. Thank you.
Next, we have Jen Ponzel. You can come to the podium and state your name and address.
Hi, I'm Jen Ponzel, two thirty-two Forest Park Boulevard. I am the swim coach at Craig High School as well. I'm also the mom of Sawyer, and he is a current lacrosse player. As a coach, I cannot imagine any more influential experience than being part of a team. The lessons learned from winning, losing, competing, and working towards goals translate into life way beyond sports and high school. These lessons learned go for all sports and all teams, not just the traditional baseball, basketball, and football. That's not to take anything away from those athletes, but the reality is that non-traditional sports like lacrosse offer athletic opportunities to many more kids of different intellectual and physical abilities. A full JV and varsity lacrosse roster could include as many as fifty-five kids who actually get to play, not just the top five to eight athletes. At the high school level, lacrosse is one of the most inclusive and adaptive sports in the country, finding a place for everyone. My son Sawyer has played lacrosse since he was seven. Sawyer has a goals board hanging from his bedroom wall. On this list is earning his varsity letter, earning all conference and all-state honors, and earning a D-one scholarship to play lacrosse. And if you know my son, he will do this. Mr. McLaurie, and I'm sure many others in the room, I know you can relate to these childhood dreams as your children have had success in their high school and athletic careers and beyond. How fortunate for them that they've played the right sports. This year, as a freshman, Sawyer received all-conference honorable mention in two positions. Next year, he has no conference. Mr. Holsman, I know that you recently completed a marathon. I know the months that go into preparing for an event like that. Now imagine doing all that training and finding out the race was canceled. That is what these kids are looking at, all the training and preparation with no race at the end. And being told they can try again in two years is not a solution. That is a lifetime for a high schooler. These kids have already lived through COVID. They have done everything asked of them, giving up friends, school, trips, clubs, graduation ceremonies, and athletics, and yet they're still here, standing before you, respectfully asking you to allow them to do something that they love. Are we really going to tell these student athletes that sports only matter if they fall in love with the right sport? Are we really going to tell these kids that we first need to focus on mainstream sports programs before we can pay attention to them? These kids deserve as much attention as all athletes in our community. Janesville would be the only school in their current conference whose team would be eliminated. As a coach and a mom, I am tired of other teams in our conference having the upper hand. We have an opportunity here to remain competitive with other local programs by not letting them get a head start. Whatever challenges may come with adding lacrosse are outweighed by the value to these that value added to their lives. How about we adults pivot for the kids this time? What a great example that would be to these young athletes to show them how to talk through challenges and figure out a solution. The time is now for these kids. They don't get a do-over. I urge you to work collaboratively with the WIA and the Janesville Lacrosse Club to make lacrosse a spring sport in two thousand and twenty-four. Thank you.
Thanks, Jen. Sawyer Ponzel, if you can come up to the podium and state your name and address.
My name is Sawyer Ponzel. I live on two two-three-two Forest Park Boulevard. I am a Janesville lacrosse player, current. I've been playing since I was seven years old, and it's actually my eighth year of playing. I play three seasons out of the four and including the spring season in Janesville. My goals are to play in college, try to win a championship, and continue to build relationships with my teammates and possibly get a varsity letter. Not playing in this next season would definitely affect the development of our team and being able to improve and get better and possibly win a championship. And I think that it would also affect like growing the game in Janesville, meaning that like if we don't have a season, other teams are going to get an upper hand and have an entire another year of development. And interestingly, lacrosse is the fastest-growing sport in North America, and there's forty programs in the state, and only and only thirty-seven of them have been sanctioned by the WIA, and we are one that hasn't. We really do not, as Janesville, don't want to be left out of the growth of the game that is honestly exponential for the future. The lessons and and relationships of lacrosse have been nothing like any other sports, and it is ultimately up to you guys on whether you want to sanction us or not and work with the WIA. So our main question, and I'm just speaking for our teammates, is why isn't this a possibility? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to section four, consent agenda. Consider approval of the June thirteenth consent agenda. Motion made by Commissioner Myers, seconded by Commissioner Ardry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes eight-zero. All right, moving now to five point one, recognized spring athlete state qualifiers. Mr. McLaurie, are you going to be leading this, or Mr. Krieger? Or I know Mr. McCormick isn't here tonight.
Hi, Jim McLaurie. Thank you. I am I'm pinch-hitting. Our athletic directors have have family obligations today, so I don't I'm not sure how complete I'm going to be, but I'm going to do the best I can here. I do have a prepared statement from Ryan Masterson, our tennis coach, which I like to read, and then our track coaches here. Okay, so track coaches are going to work their way up, and so we'll go from there. So I'm going to start anyways. Just a great spring for us, a lot of kids involved in a lot of activities, and that in itself is a great thing, but to have an opportunity to take your teams to the next level through sectionals, regionals, and to state qualifiers. So so Ryan wanted to make sure I read this. So again, Ryan Masterson, our Craig High School tennis coach. So Nolan Sullivan and Alex Currie qualified as a doubles team for the WIA Boys State Tennis Tournament in two thousand and twenty-three. They are the first players from Craig to accomplish this in over fifteen years. Nolan has been a number-one singles player for Craig for the last two years, but moved this year to doubles for his senior season. Alex played as the number-three varsity singles player last year as a freshman. At the Big Eight Sectional just a few weeks ago, they they together beat Monona Grove's number-one team in order to qualify for the state tournament. Throughout the course of the season, they have both they they together they have beat multiple state qualifying teams. Unfortunately, their first match at state, they were they were defeated by West OSHA Central six-one-six-one to be knocked out of the tournament. They represented Craig and Janesville extremely well throughout the entire season and their careers, and opposing coaches would often remark on not only are they great players, but they displayed great sportsmanship as well. Coach Masterson says he cannot be more proud of what they've accomplished and what they meant to our team. Nolan is now graduating and will be attending St. Thomas in Minnesota on a full academic scholarship, and we look forward to having Alex back as one of our leaders next season. So that's Nolan Sullivan and Alex Currie for tennis.
Yeah, have.
Yeah, we would like the track team to come up. Yep.
All right, so I am Kellen Anderson. I am not one of the head coaches at Craig Track, but I'm a volunteer coach slash dad. And we have thirteen students who actually went to state last weekend. It was a very, very hot state meet. There was some bad weather on Friday night, and so our boys, four-by-one and four-by-two, I think the second group, you ran at eleven-thirty at night. It's ended at one-thirty in the morning, and so we had to get our whole schedule moved back where we would have started at ten a.m. with the four-by-eight girls. They ended up running at five p.m., and we had to keep them out of the heat all day long so that they could run well. We also had, he's not here tonight, but Jose was able to make it as an individual in the eight hundred. He ran under two minutes for the first time in his life in the eight hundred, which was awesome. The four-by-two, four-by-one boys, I believe both teams had the second fastest times in Craig's history. And then the four-by-eight girls, last year, they went to state. They had the number-two girl in state last year on their team, which helped a lot to get to state, and so we lost her. She graduated, and so these girls came together, and they were clutch all year long when they had to be, won the conference title. It was really cool. My daughter's on that team, so I'm a little proud of that one, not going to lie. So, yeah, they did a great job. They're great kids. If you get a chance to be around them at all, every single one of these kids, they're hard workers, really, really wonderful kids, and so super proud of them. So thanks.
Yeah, please introduce them, please.
All right. See, I don't coach the boys as much, so I still don't know all the four-by-one boys' first names. What's your first name again?
Hunter.
Okay, this one's Hunter. This is Levi Booker. Got your last name right? This is Kara Riley. And we got Anika. I know first names, okay?
That's fine.
Again, volunteer coach. We got Kendall right here. We got Juliana Moran. That one I should remember because that's my daughter Abigail Anderson, and that's who's here tonight, and so.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kat Riley, first-year head coach for the girls' team at Parker. Unfortunately, other staff members were not able to come tonight, so I will be speaking for both the boys and the girls' team. For the gentlemen, Paul Kimms, junior, qualified in the one hundred. Jeff Rowan, as a junior, his first year in track, qualified in the high jump. Kayden Brandenburg, a junior, in the two hundred and four hundred. Kayden qualified for the finals in both races, where he placed tenth in the two hundred and third in the four hundred. He also set the new school record for Parker. And then finally, the boys' four-by-four relay team, which consisted of Avery Eastman, Paul Kim, Diesel Richards, and Kayden Brandenburg, with Cody Slater as an alternate, qualified for finals and placed ninth overall. For the girls tonight, we have Violet McHugh and Shay Shu. Very proud of them for coming tonight. I know summer is a busy time for our student athletes with jobs and other sports, so I'm very, very thankful that they came tonight. Individual state qualifiers for girls, Maya Barnes, a junior in the four hundred. She placed eleventh overall with a time of fifty-nine seconds ninety-eight. Harper Brandenburg, a freshman for the four hundred. Harper qualified for the finals and placed sixth overall with a time of fifty-seven-point-nine-nine, which also set the new school record, which was set from nineteen seventy-nine. So, yeah, very, very proud. And then finally, the girls' four-by-four, which is what Violet and Shay competed on. They were seeded eighteenth, but they took fifteenth overall, so anytime you do better than your seed, that's a win in my books. They ran a time of four minutes, eleven seconds, and that relay team consisted of Shay, Maya Barnes, Violet, Harper Brandenburg, and Micaiah Smith and Isaiah Gray as alternates. Very proud of the girls for competing at the highest level under unfavorable circumstances like the Craig coach was mentioning. Our girls' four-by-four ran at twelve-fifty a.m., and then our boys ran at one a.m. So not what we want to see, but they still competed, and I know because as watching them, they were just giving it their all. So super proud of them and all everyone that competed. The coaches at Parker would like to thank the school district for supporting us while we represented Parker High School at the state meet. Thank you.
Thank you. Who is this guy?
I wasn't going to mention anything, but hello, school board members. My name is Nick English. I'm assistant boys' golf coach at Craig High School, and I'm here with Easton Hayworth, our individual state qualifier. Easton just finished his junior season at Craig High School. He's been a three-year varsity player for us. This past season, unfortunately, our team did not qualify for the state tournament, but Easton shot a seventy-one, one over par at Oak Grove and Milton at the sectional tournament to qualify as an individual for the state tournament. During this past season, Easton also finished or also was recognized as an all-conference athlete. He was named first-team all-conference in the Big Eight. He's one of only five golfers to be named first-team all-conference, so quite an accomplishment. Up at the state tournament, Easton had an opportunity to play in Kohler, Wisconsin, at Black Wolf Run, which is a top hundred public course in the country. So quite an honor to be able to play a course like that. He handled himself with a tremendous amount of respect and very proud of the way that he handled himself, a tremendous amount of class, and very honored to have him up there. He should be, he, the course conditions were extremely tough, but you know what? He battled for for two long days, including a practice round, so three days on Sunday. But we're excited about Easton coming back as a senior, and we look forward to having him back and alongside his teammates. So, Easton, congratulations.
Easton, why don't you say a few words? I'm teasing him, but he did get his first hole-in-one this year, too, so that was a real, yeah. Yeah, he did. Good job, buddy. Thank you.
Again, just thank you for the opportunity for our kids and our coaches to be recognized, and we we really value coming here. We look forward to coming in the fall with hopefully more kids and more coaches. Thank you.
Thank you. You may as well stay comfortable because we're going to go to five point two with Mr. McCray and McLaurie and approved school fees.
I'm included, thank you, and included in the board packet is really a summation of a lot of work that Mr. McLaurie and his athletic directors and their support staff pulled together over many months. We had the opportunity, predominantly, I should say, Jim had the opportunity to present information at finance. It got extremely granular. It got extremely granular, so again, what you have before you is really a high-level summation of that work. So please don't let the brevity diminish the amount of effort that Jim and his team put into this project. Take a step back. You may recall, I typically come to you pretty much every summer to talk about fees. And I think this is my fourth year, and the previous three summers, there have been no changes until this year. So a little bit different of an approach. When we look to fees such as the consumable material fee and parking fee, there are no recommended changes at this time. However, again, as I alluded to earlier, a great deal of work in regards to, not only, we'll say, admission, in part due to the changes going on within the Big Eight, but also really taking a look at restructuring the participation fees. I know it's Jim's priority. I think every administrator knows Jim's priority. It's really a shared priority in terms of really, you know, allowing or creating an environment where participation increases, right? You saw just a few moments ago really the benefit of athletics and the benefit of being a student athlete here in the district. And we want that experience really for as many people as possible. So taking a look at passes and taking a look at high schools as well as middle school participation fees when it comes to athletics. I think you'll see, and I'll allow Jim to really go into some detail and perhaps answer any questions, should there be some from the board in terms of what's on the thought process behind that, other than increasing participation, really reducing, at times, the financial burden across many levels. And I will tell you, as a school business official, fees are, to some extent, a necessity, but we really, really don't view those as an economic or a revenue-generating source for us. And so in the perfect world, there would be no fees, but that's just unfortunately not our reality, and it's really not a reality for many districts, if not all districts throughout the state. So I probably talked long enough. You get to hear me again on the next agenda item. But I'll turn it over to Jim and certainly entertain any questions that the board may have.
I'd like to make a motion for approval.
Discussion, Lisa?
I always struggle with that. I don't have a, I understand the past practice of not, you know, this is a an increase, but I see the increase in the regular student athlete. But can you tell me a little bit about, since it's not a revenue generator, the philosophy or the reasoning behind raising the reduced rate? Because I'm sure that's based on a financial need or... So I understand that you increase the student athlete, but for somebody that's wanting to increase student participation for families that necessarily can't afford it, I don't understand why you increase the reduced fee if it's not a revenue generator. Can you explain that to me?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the question. We, basically, we try to do a 360 evaluation of all of our fees when it comes to athletic activities. And we look for opportunities where we haven't made any adjustments. And so as we made adjustments to other areas, to every area of fees, we didn't consider separating that one out. One of the reasons, one of the reasons why is we've, we did a dive into our trends of the number of students that are participating, the number of students that are participating who are requiring some type of financial need, and actually, that number has decreased. And we identified, one of the likely indicators was that the fee, I'm gonna say it the right way here. We didn't see that a fee was being a barrier for participation. And actually, we had fewer students. We still had a high number of students, but fewer students actually asking to have a fee waived or to have a fee reduced at all. So we didn't see a correlation where, why, we didn't see that as being an area that we could not increase.
I personally disagree with you, because I feel it is a barrier, and you might see a decrease because people of a low socioeconomic status might not ask for help. So I am in full support of increasing regular student athlete fees, but I will not agree to an increase in the reduced, because I think you're creating barriers to people that might want to participate. For example, hockey went from 120 to 130. That extra $10 might make a difference. Might not make a difference to you or I, but it might make a difference to a family that might want their child to participate.
Well, again, my eye is just the data that we're looking at, so I'm presenting it based on the bigger picture of data, so.
I make a motion to approve the memo as presented, except removing the increase in the reduction for financial need.
Do you mean for all students? Because there are reduced charges for certain individual sports as well.
I'm looking at page one, which would be the high school athletic participation increases in the far-right category for reduced, and the middle school athletic participation, the far-left or far-right column for reduced.
So just so you know, if this matters to, for your amendment, the reduced for hockey, that increases $10 as well. So there, I don't know if there's, I just wanted to point that out in case that...
Right, I would rather it stay 120. Yeah, and for golf, the surcharge for reduced, I'd like it to keep at 30 instead of increasing it to 35. Those dollars mean a lot to families.
Denise, are we, do we vote on the amendment first? So we have a motion made by Lisa, I heard a second, I thought, by Carl, thank you. All those in favor of the amendment to accept this as is, but reduce, excuse me, remove the increase for the reduced under the proposed columns? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes 8-0. So now we go to the new motion that was made by Kevin, seconded by Jim, is this memo without the increase in the proposed column for reduced, right? Everybody clear? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That passes 8-0. Thank you. Good idea, Lisa. Alright, moving on to 5.3, provide administration with direction to deposit all unspent dollars from fiscal year 2223 and to Fund 73 and Fund 46. Dan McCray.
Thank you very much. So this is an annual request. The format is pretty similar. A couple highlights, right, is we've gotten better and better each year in budgeting. So we currently have just over 2 million in our actual operating budget, so we're just looking to close a gap to meet the actuarially determined contribution, and we're targeting 2.65 million, right? So that's the first step in relation to Fund 73. So what's happening over time is we get better and better. You may recall years ago, where we'd have all this surplus. But the surplus, we still had to meet our actuarially defined contribution of about 2.5 million, right? So really baking that into the budget, because as we get better in budgeting, there's less of a surplus, right? So we're really essentially accounting for our responsibility. So that's Fund 73. Fund 46 is, is we do have dollars that still remain, right? Essentially, it's about $130 million budget, right? Even if we come in at 99.5% of our budget, right, we still have $650,000. The board back in 2015, right, made a very responsible, if you will, vote in action to create Fund 46, to where leftover dollars can be transferred into Fund 46. Those dollars are aidable, so that's really great for us as a positively aided school district, right? And that has built up a fund to allow us to tackle projects, a proportion of which that we're undertaking currently at Franklin, and then that will be doing at Edison in terms of window replacement and other improvements. So as everyone knows, right, we have over 2 million square feet. We have a large capital investment. Our operating fund alone does not support our annual capital improvements nor capital maintenance. Fund 46 is a tool to assist us, but it's not essentially the silver bullet to meet the district's needed requirements.
I'd like to move that we accept the recommendation from the administration to, with Fund 73, to contribute beyond the ADC of 2.5 million up to 2.65 million. And in Fund 46, to contribute up to 1 million in estimated unspent funds.
Motion made by Commissioner Myers, seconded by Dahmerhausen. Any discussion? Kevin?
Were those the right numbers?
Yeah.
Okay. I should have read that part. But my question is, a Fund 46?
Yes.
Are those dollars available to be used on improvement to athletic facilities?
No, only on maintenance.
Only on maintenance of?
So for example, you couldn't...
Can we maintain athletic facilities with that, those dollars?
Greg says yes.
Maybe, right. You know, it's really intended to be, right, and so again, it's state statute. So when we get into maintenance versus what is improvement, right? So if we're looking to install brand-new bleachers at an outdoor athletic facility, that would not be an allowable expense. If you have bleachers that are in need of repair, so you need a $50,000 repair, right? So B.R. Bleachers comes in, does an assessment, recommends $50,000 in bleacher repairs, you could probably target the $50,000 for those bleacher repairs. When we look to window replacement, right, are the windows that we're replacing, because they're 50 years old, an improvement, most likely, but it's replacing an existing asset, if you will. If you're saying, well, let's go ahead and, you know, replace the turf to reduce our maintenance costs at Monterey with field turf, that would, I would say, be an improvement, so we couldn't use that. So it, so the answer is yes, it just kind of really depends upon the project.
So I guess what I'm getting at is our outdoor facilities at Parker and Craig, as it relates to softball and baseball, are out of control and need to be maintained. So are dollars available to repair and maintain these fields? So to me, maintenance means maintaining the fields in a usable condition, which, in my opinion, they are not now. So are those dollars available to go to Parker and Craig Baseball Diamonds and fix those things?
Possibly.
Or maintain them?
Possibly.
Okay, I guess I'd like to know that, because then I would maybe have other action to propose. Okay.
Am I correct that?
Always.
Right answer, okay. That when we have surplus funds, that there's limited things that we can make the contribution or to use? There's, there are limited ways that we can use any sort of unspent funds from a budget.
Correct. So you essentially have three options. The Fund 73, not every district has a Fund 73. We do. Fund 46, not every district does, we do. The other option is, is you can let dollars fall, if you will, to fund balance, right? And to some extent, we play that a little bit, right? And when I say we play it, is if, you know, we have to do any transaction by July 30th. As we work through fiscal year end, we know we have a 73 obligation, we know we have a targeted obligation to 46. If all of a sudden we have some money left over, and if you recall back to the last audit report, we had approximately $800,000 left over, we move to fund balance. I know that was a particular issue that Mr. Murray wrote, brought up. And I know at the finance committee, I think at least twice, we've talked about the importance of fund balance. The issue with fund balance, and when you say let's have $800,000 fall to the bottom line, so to speak, is none of that's aidable. Right, so, you know, if we put a million to fund balance, we would essentially lose $250,000 in equalization aid, because it's not an aidable, it's not an expenditure, so therefore, it's not aidable. So in terms of trying to increase fund balance, but doing so in a measured approach so that you don't get slayed on aid, right? Because any type of aid we receive is essentially property tax relief within the district's revenue limit authority.
Okay, and so, so if we were to contribute up to a million, so we don't know what the final number is yet. I mean, it could be $500, because it's up to a million. But we, so we don't really know. But doesn't putting this away in a place where it's aidable then also frees up money from the money that we use for maintenance of important things like the fields and everything else, or does it not?
Well, if I go back to the supposition I said just a moment ago in terms of you're always right, I don't want to contradict myself, so.
I'm wrong, is what you're saying.
You know, what we try to do, right, so it's difficult for us, if you will, in the heat of the moment, right? So we ask for the general parameters from the board, right, to where, oh my gosh, you know, we, right, we're, all the final grants are coming in, right? So we're getting our final amount of, you know, open enrollment revenue and expenditures and what have you. You know, so to your point, if all of a sudden, you know, we have 1.5 million, you know, probably administratively, we'll ask ourselves, okay, what's our fund balance position? Does it make sense? Or should we put all 1.5 million back into Fund 46? We know as a general priority, Fund 73, right, we're meeting that obligation, if not even more, and then Fund 46, and again, the benefit of that is it's aidable.
Thank you.
Yeah, just a little bit of a hint, if you can, here. Fund 73. How far along, and I know we can't hit 100%, it's just not gonna happen, but we're putting in pretty good chunks over the years. How, what is our target goal, if we were funded 100%, and how much do we have in there?
So it's kind of a 30-year amateurization schedule, right, and we're asked to put 2.5 million away. So, you know, simple math, we're 85 million or thereabouts, right? We're maybe sitting at 10 million?
About half?
10 million of the 80, so...
Okay, eight, and how much, what's our line as it is today? I know it's a moving average, you gotta be up there, it's always moving.
If you're asking what the actuarially determined contribution, as we know, is 2.5, right? We have an 80-plus million-dollar liability.
Okay.
We're funding that liability, and again, sorry, I should have prepared this, I did not, we're probably sitting at 8 to 10. Because keep in mind, we have active retirees now.
Sure.
Right, so they're drawing from that, and we're replenishing it. So it's never always 2 million plus 2 million plus 2 million, and so on and so forth, because we're drawing from that at the same time. Right, so we're not, we're not at 20%, we're not at 15%.
Okay.
You know, it, and that's why, I mean, we... Well, we're able to meet our retiree obligations and then some, right? So that's a good position to be in.
I just want people to know it isn't just sitting there.
I mean, it's actively used, right, in terms of, you know, we do have active retirees. Correct. You know, the board has done its diligence in terms of reducing its obligation over time. That liability could be much higher, right? And so we have almost, and I wish Ms. Johnson was with us, but I want to say off the top of my head, we have about three levels, right, of retirees. Those coming into the organization today do not have the same level of benefit of those who came in prior to 2015.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, just going back, we have a motion made by Kathy, seconded by Carl. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? That passes 8-0, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to 5.4. Discussion on WIAA lacrosse team for 2425 school year. Mr. Holsman and Mr. McGlory.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to provide the board an opportunity to have a conversation specifically about lacrosse and our conversations. I know prior to today's board meeting, many board members have received communications from community members who are interested in lacrosse and the potential of lacrosse joining the school district's options for a varsity sport. This, I guess, last month, May 30th, the athletic directors and Mr. McGlory and I met with three of the five people who spoke here today, talked a little bit about... I met with three of the five people who spoke here today, talked a little bit about what we have done and what we want to do, and learned from them a little bit about what, what their interests were as well. I, I think the, the interest in bringing this as a board agenda was really just to provide the board with an opportunity to, to talk to me and to Mr. McLaury, if you have any questions, and protect, potentially provide the administration with some direction on what you might have interest in moving forward. So, I'll pause there and see if there's any specific comments or conversations.
Yeah, my one question is, you and I talked, and how many people do we need and how many would be available, both female and male, towards this? Do we know that?
I don't have, I can't give you specific numbers tonight, but what I can tell you is that, based on our conversations, we do not have enough students in the school district of Janesville to have a boys' and girls' lacrosse team. We would be required to add student athletes from likely neighboring school districts. So, recently, you know, the conversation has been Milton and Fort Atkinson would together likely have enough students that we could have a boys' and girls' team. Part of the, the conversation was to work together with the lacrosse club, because we don't have, you know, we're not hosting any lacrosse, so we really don't know who's in the pipeline and who they have, and so we would need to work with that group and organization to find that out, to ensure that we could offer a, a program that would be sustainable, not just for a year, but for years to come, in our current Big Eight conference.
Okay. The other question, I think, is, what is the lacrosse season?
It's a spring season in high school.
It's a spring season? I wasn't aware of it in that, as such. So, if we decide we had interest in that, two things occur. Number, number one, of course, time to get it going, and do we have the money to do it? I'm not sure what's needed there, and maybe the, a club could furnish some of it in that. But I'm kind of for it if we can put the whole thing, make it work, in that, so I'll, I'll shut up and let others add to it.
Um, just procedurally, as a board, are you looking for a simple consensus, or I don't know if the agenda provides me an opportunity to make a motion?
Board members can make a motion at any-
Okay. I'd, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion for the board to direct administration to come up with a plan and/or proposal with the help of all these stakeholders, with the intent of adding lacrosse as a varsity sport for boys and girls in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Now, I can have a question. It came up, twenty-four, twenty-five, which is a year off, so we do have that one-year gap that they were talking about, in that. So, I don't know if that's more than that clarity or anything.
No, you're absolutely right. I mean, I've had many con- many conversations with lacrosse supporters, and it's, in my opinion, I've seen a budget drafted by administration, which is not significant, in my opinion, to have a, host this sport. But I, in my opinion, based on what I see what's going on now with athletics, I don't, I just don't think we have time to appropriately do it by spring. That's, that's my opinion, based on lots of different variables. That's why I said, you know, thi- this, this process will take a few months, and next thing you know, we'll be talking about the next school year. So, that, that's the compromise that I think this board could take on. It's not what that group wants, but at this time, I think it's the best, next best thing to do, in my opinion. Thank you.
Any other, Kathy?
So, I, thank you very much for that motion, and I'd like this, the idea of us, you know, moving forward, or at least work, trying to work out the problem. I guess, I don't really know what it takes to, to bring a sport to a, a district. I mean, I feel, to me, it's like, well, you buy the equipment and you rent, you know, and you sign up for the field and you get a couple of coaches, but I really don't know. So, could, could somebody educate me as to what it takes?
Well, I think there's a couple of pieces. I'd just give you some history. So, the reason why the board doesn't know is because the last sport brought to, from the WIAA to public schools was nineteen eighty-two, and it was soccer. Since then, there have been sports that have been brought to the WIA, but they were gender-specific sports. So, for example, boys' volleyball or girls' hockey, something that already existed but hadn't been there. So, the process is a bit new. There's a couple of things and, and key dates that have to occur. Number one, as I indicated earlier, we do not believe that we have enough students at either Parker or Craig combined. We would combine the team, we don't have enough to have one, that we, to run a boys' and/or girls' lacrosse team. So, we would need to add a, in, into a co-op. In order to do that, you have to apply to the WIA and get approval prior to June first. So, that's the first process, is that we have to apply for the upcoming year, earlier than a year from now. In addition to that, we have to draw up agreements with local school districts who will help contribute to the process. So, I'll use it loosely, let's say that it costs twenty thousand dollars to run a lacrosse team, we have twenty players, twelve of them are from the Janesville School District, eight of them are from another area school district, and two of them are from another. The other school districts would then contribute the equalization of what it costs to run that. So, we have to have assigned agreements for them to do that, and it's common. We have a, we are part of a co-op for girls' hockey. So, we don't host girls' hockey, we provide supports, and Beloit School District actually hosts girls' hockey. I think sometimes people think of the co-op for our skaters, our co-op, but it really is only the school district of Janesville kids, so it's, when we say co-op, it's Craig and Parker, which really, to the WIA, is not a co-op. Co-op is from outside school district folks. So, I, I think there's a number of things. First, we have had a couple of conversations. We would work with the Janesville Lacrosse Organization to try to figure out, well, how many kids from currently in grades, I guess it would be seven, maybe if you say, now we're in this next summer, grade eight through grade eleven are in the program? How many boys? How many girls? What does it look like? And first and foremost, do we have enough? Once we assume that, we also have to apply loosely, and I could lean onto our Athletic Director McLaury, we have to apply to our conference to be approved to have a co-op as well. Now, I believe that almost every school in the Big Eight, I think there's four schools, four teams will be in the Big Eight, they all are co-ops. So, like Madison has one team, they're all, all the four high schools, well, they'll go to one team. And then there's some other co-ops that there ends up being four. Now, there's some others area conferences that potentially will have co-ops as well. Once that's approved, the WI is approved, we have the contracts approved, we would then post jobs, for example, for coaches, go through the same protocols. We have to find a place to play, so we would have to, you know, we don't have a field on our site, so we'd have to reach out to the community and, whether it's the city or a private agency. And so, all of those things are things that have to happen, and, and based on what I heard from the proposal, that's what we would bring back. Here's where we would play, here's how much it's going to cost, here's how many players we have, this is what the transportation would look like. We would go back and, and work through, here's how many games you can play in a season, not have you worry about what the, the, you know, overall big picture is, is really all we would want. And again, our goal would be to have an opportunity for a long-term, sustainable program. We would want to work cooperatively, obviously, with all of our organizations and clubs, so that as many kids can participate that will. And so, that part, that grows. Ultimately, a- and again, it would be up to the board, but we would want the board to approve that as a varsity sport. I think that's appropriate. Even though we probably haven't done something, we could both look back in the nineteen eighties when we added soccer. I'm not sure if Janesville added it right at the time or a few years later, but that's likely, because then that would give us some direction, meaning that then we would put it in the budget for the, so for the upcoming year, and we would budget for it, and then that would be part of what we do. Knowing that long-term, again, I would just speak for my own self, that we would want to have a program that feeds itself long enough that we wouldn't have to rely on other school districts to run it, right? And again, that, I, I don't know how many years along the way that would be, and if that's even a possibility, but, you know, I would definitely want to see us have, if we call them the Blue Birds or whatever we did, our own kids, but until then, we will, we will have to add other school districts, and there's some, a small logistics of which happens in co-ops. So, I think that would be the kind of the circle that we would do.
Thank you very much, because, and I'm a nineteen eighty graduate, so I remember when soccer was the exotic sport, so-
Been a while.
And, and a big deal, like, oh, my gosh, who's going to play that anyways, was, was the attitude. Thank you very much.
So, just to summarize, even though it's not a compromise, which is what Kevin's motion was, it's a timing issue. We've already passed June first, so for those that really want it for next year, the reality is, we've passed June first.
Correct.
Okay. I just don't want people that are listening to unders- to understand a little bit why we can't do it for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, because we already missed the deadline for the WIA.
The one thing I would add is, part of the work that administration will do to explore this, I would like a, somehow, to survey students, because I think we don't need, we don't want to just rely on the clubs to provide counts for incoming students or, you know, incoming players. I think, I mean, imagine, because I don't know the cost of being in a club, right, but I know other clubs, and there's a cost, so to our earlier agenda item, if there's an opportunity for some kids to play lacrosse who've never had the opportunity to be part of a club, I, I don't know, maybe we can get enough in Janesville. So, I would like that done too, so it's open to everybody, not just talking about how many kids does a club seat coming up. Any other discussion? All right, oh, sorry, Lisa.
Um, I, I just want to add, you know, I think we're all in support of this. I, I, in my heart, it, I feel really sad for the students and families and individuals who are, have been so invested into lacrosse, and I, I would love to say, we'd like to just push it through, but I am thinking, I appreciate your questions, Kathy, about, I don't even know what's about, I have no idea what's involved. As a district, we hire experts who are skilled in organizing athletics and administration, and so, while I can say, yeah, I want to get this done, I have no idea what's required and the amount of work that, and so, I feel very much that, as a commissioner, I need to rely on the experts and understand that there are timelines that sometimes are not what we want, but they are what they are. And so, yeah, I'd, I'd love to see this happen as soon as it can, and I am in support of this happening as soon as it can, so-
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay, so we have a motion by Kevin, seconded by Lisa, if I'm not mistaken. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes eight-zero. Thanks again to the people who came to speak tonight. All right. Moving on, five point five, Janesville's Way Forward Strategic Plan Update. Mr. Holsman.
Yeah, thank you. I just want to provide a brief update in regards to our strategic planning. I have a, a small stakeholder committee of six folks. Commissioner Paul's going to be joining us, along with Allison, Dr. Graff, Dan Heller, Jessica Grant-Turk, and myself. And on Monday, the twenty-sixth, in the afternoon, we are going to be listening to presentations from outside professionals to talk to us about how they might help us move this plan forward. So, I had one meeting today, just to kind of prep that, the organizations have another meeting this week, so they're well-prepared and understand what that looks like. We'll create a rubric, and then hopefully, that date, make a recommendation for the board on the thirteen, the eleventh, I guess, is the next board meeting. Again, I think that this is interesting work, but it also is something that we need to make sure that we're doing it right and taking time to do that. So, what we would anticipate is these, our professionals would help us with some of the stakeholder groups and just helping frame that work. We've had some quality meetings here at the board level and talked a little bit about what we most value, and so, we're going to, we've, I've included all of that detail that we've done at the board level to those groups. They've reviewing that, going to provide us with a presentation, and I would anticipate we'll have a few questions, and then at the end of that day, hopefully, be able to make a decision to bring to the board on the eleventh, is that the right, next board, eleventh, July eleventh board meeting, so.
And thank you to the community members and to Commissioner Paul for serving on that internal committee. Appreciate it. All right, moving on, item six, Finance Buildings and Grounds Update Report.
Yes, we kind of to go through our agenda, targeting our referendum-approved projects to have a walkthrough somewhere toward the end of August. Hopefully, all of, all of the little things are completed. The walkthrough really primarily focused on our Community Financial Advisory Committee to get their feedback as we look for our next steps. As Mr. McCray mentioned earlier, the ESER work at Franklin has started, it'll be this summer and next summer, really focused on improving air quality, and then continued evaluation of other projects at Craig and Parker. We had a really brief cursory discussion on student fees, whether it was athletic or other fees, and it was more than cursory, but i- it was pretty detailed. So, it was well-vetted before it came back, so it made our conversation a lot shorter. I think the one thing that really will be a focus going forward is our master facility plan. As we look at bringing on really consultants to work through what are our needs today, we did a lot of work in the past, and we accumulated, at that time, was a hundred and twenty million, I might say, as a cursory overview, and now we really need to focus to say, what are all of our needs? As you mentioned, Kevin, some of the things from an athletic facility standpoint, some of it's maintenance, but then longer term, what do we want our facilities to look like? And one of the comments that was made to me, and I shared with the committee, is if we go back in time, Janesville and its collective facilities was seen as top in the conference, and now we have slowly moved to the bottom of the conference. So, when I look at, that was from an athletic facility standpoint, and then when you look at collectively our buildings as a whole, and I've been doing some research, just what have the other districts done, whether it was new buildings, significant enhancements, as we think back to our high school referendums that we passed, which was the largest in the state at the time, that was, it's a drop in the bucket now compared to many of the other districts. So, we'll really be focusing on that. As I went through that, we did an evaluation, really to look at bringing on a consultant to start to work with us for the next steps. And then the next piece of that will actually look at a contractor to work with them and talk about, even if it's conceptual layouts and then facility improvements. And I think we'll be sitting with, as a board, as a community, is what do we want our students to really come into? How long is the feasibility of a building? As we are rapidly approaching hundred-year-old buildings that for our students in elementary school will be in, is that a viable educational environment today? I think we'll be faced with that. So, as we think about our strategic- Um, so as we think about our strategic plan and the Janesville Way Forward, I can see that being an undertone in that too. Um, so that was a whole lot of editorial stuff. Um, the other thing that we really didn't, well, we talked about, but no work had really been done, is a budget update. And now that it appears like some movement is being made between the governor's office and the legislature, I'm sure that'll be a focus of our July meeting. So it'll be a more robust conversation from an overall budget update standpoint. That's it.
Thank you. Yeah, it sounds great. All right, PPC meeting update.
Liz, thank you. Our last PPC meeting was probably the most brief, but certainly not full of great information. But um, it was a quick one for the year, so that was great. Um, not that, our other meetings weren't great. Several of the items were passed on to the consent agenda, including um, summer school pay increases, et cetera. So that was nice to um, hear about those updates. One of the things I wanted to share, we had a really nice presentation kind of going over the high-level parts of the employee health insurance, open enrollment update. A lot of that we had seen already, so there was really not a great deal of new information. But something that did really pique our interest, and several of us commented, was that in the Family Advantage Health Plan, last year the number was set at forty and we are seeing um, right, as of that date, eighty-two people who've enrolled, employees who've enrolled into that, which has more than doubled, um, which is great. They're utilizing that um, really nice opportunity, that program that we're offering. Um, you can certainly go back and look through the board packet to find the other details if you wanna refresh any of those, but we've seen that before. And then um, there was a presentation on updated hiring prac- practices for our certified staff um, from Mr. Holsman. And Mr. Holsman shared that they are going to be updating the non-certified staff practices, hiring practices eventually, but this was worked at, um, I don't know if you've taken a look at the kind of a flow chart, not exactly a flow chart in a way, but um, the hiring guide, it's very comprehensive. What I think stood out to many of us was that it offered this um, uniformity to hiring practices across our district so that if someone is hiring for a position at Jackson Elementary or Kennedy Elementary, they're not going to be completely different scenarios in terms of what expectations that uh, these applicants are going to encounter. Um, I'm really impressed to see this. I think the better, the m- more involved tools that we can give to our administrators when they are, you know, going through that hiring process, just the better for them, eases their um, work and then it makes for a um, more uniform experience for those applicants. And what was really nice is, you know, as we were at that presentation, we were talking about even things that could be added to our website for um, like what to expect, what the new applicants could expect the process would be. And I really appreciate as a commissioner, when we're going through this information and we're sharing ideas, that it truly is a collaborative process. It isn't just, this is what we're doing. But when someone has a, a great point, um, cause we all have different thoughts and opinions, um, that they listen, and I, I think that's really helpful. Um, I appreciate that because we often hear things from community members and staff who've gone through that, so that, that's really great. Um, that's what I have for you. We are not meeting in July, so, and I am realizing that I think we were supposed to plan, plan session for July. Was that set yet? For the August meeting, did we set that one yet? I'm just, I'm just kind of circling back in my memory bank from that day. I, maybe it was. Anyway, we can talk about that later, but I just wanna make sure that I'm not, okay. I, and I think that one maybe needed to be rescheduled for me. I think that's what it was, so we need to, I, I remember that there was something that needed to be rescheduled and that's the one. Um, anyway, so we need to talk about that. Okay. If ever there's any things that, anything that you would like to have added to PPC to be looking at going forward, please reach out and let us know. Thank you.
Thanks Liz. Lots of good stuff going on. All right, uh, we're to number eight, future meetings, dates, times and agenda items. Denise? Sorry? What did I miss? Oh, I'm sorry. Well, I only have eight point one that says future meeting dates.
And agenda items, that would be a summary of our documents.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, right, yes, so, okay. And agenda items, you're right. Kathy, thank you.
So um, your next meetings are the Finance Buildings and Grounds Committee meeting on Monday, July tenth, at four PM here at the Educational Services Center. And the following day is Tuesday, July eleventh, for the Board of Education meeting at six PM here at the Educational Services Center.
Thank you. With that. With that, we are adjourned, thank you.